Good afternoon, folks. We've got some new mics up here. I hope everybody can hear us out there. I think you can. But welcome, everybody. It's February 18, 2014, here at 6:00 PM, City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. I want to note, one councilperson will not be with us tonight. Ms. Rose Myers will be absent, and call this meeting to order. I'd like to start out by calling upon Shayk Anderson with Worship Pastor with Generations Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and then the Texas Pledge. All rise.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to represent your people. We ask that you bless these men who have worked so hard on their jobs, and then they come to work for this community, God. We ask that you would bless this meeting. Holy Spirit, lend your wisdom and guide them in all decisions, and let nothing be said without the help of the Lord. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Paul, be in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation, indivisible.
The first item will be the consent agenda, which was the approval of the council minutes of the meeting of February 4, 2014. Council, you've all had an opportunity to read over the minutes. I will note that there was one discrepancy. The city secretary had not heard clearly the 14-022 regarding the subdivision ordinance amendments. And I think we've talked to Councilman Parsons and Councilperson Myers that there were nays. So now we have, instead of three nays, five nays. Are there any more amendments or corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen and a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. Those are approved. Our next item, we're moving into the deliberation agenda. The first item we have is to consider and adopt a resolution supporting further development by TechDOT for the Crescent Relief Route. As you know, the Texas Department of Transportation will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 25, 2014, at Bear Creek Community Church, 18600 Highway 377 South Crescent, Texas, 76035. The purpose of this hearing is to represent -- or to present the proposed new location roadway of US Highway US 377 in the city of Crescent. Displays will be available for viewing at 6:30 PM, with the formal hearing commencing at 7:00 PM. And council, we are here just to submit a resolution. Is there any discussion on this issue, council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution supporting the development of the Crescent Relief Route. I have a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Council, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That resolution is approved. The next item is to consider and approve a resolution of financial support pledging support of Atlantic Housing Foundation's proposed TDHCA tax credit development to be located off of Davis Road behind the Davis Crossing Retail Plaza. Council, this is a -- actually, this is the housing authorities that are wanting to come in for the low-income housings. And Atlantic Housing has come forward with a written request regarding local financial support in order to hopefully increase their competitive score. Atlantic Housing's request dated January 31, 2014, in which requests $108,000 in the form of a development loan or in the kind contributions and/or three, and a waiver where various development fees is attached to this staff report. Now, these development loans are permitted under state law when granted in support of a development awarded tax credits from the TDHCA. To provide the applicant with the most available points in the qualification process, the loan must be for 15 years and not charge more than the 3% interest and have a minimum amortization period of 30 years. No loan agreement will be negotiated and signed until Atlantic Housing is awarded the tax credits. I'm going to call upon our city manager here, Wayne McKefen, to talk a little bit more about this, then open it up for questions and review, council.
Well, as you know, we talked to a couple of organizations that were interested in going after this, I think what they call a mixed-income development. We weren't -- yeah, we were not interested in making an equity investment in it. So we went back out to them and said we'd be interested in perhaps making a loan. We had actually one group, this group, come back and say they were interested in a $108,000 loan, like you said, at 3%, 15 years. What we get out of it is $9.5 million of avalourum value, which will generate around $37,000 a year in avalourum taxes. On the 3% income off the loan, that's about our cost of funds, our major cost of funds. So there is really isn't any net income on that. But they'll be paying us back about seven -- on a 15-year loan, they pay us back about $7,000 a year. We would like to see a lower-term loan on it, but I think someone's here from Atlantic, right?
Yeah. Well, I'll call along there. I just wanted the council to get a --
But overall, we see it, not only in terms of financial, it makes sense, but also it would provide the city with a level of workforce that we currently don't have if, in fact, people could live in the city at lower rental rates, and would help probably in that regard, too.
And tonight, council, what we'll be doing would be considering and approving a -- just the resolution of financial support to these folks who want to come in. And like Wayne pointed out, there are representatives out there in the audience, and I would entertain bringing them up if there's any questions that wanted to be directed to those folks. Council, do you have any questions or concerns?
I do, Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
3%, pretty cheap interest on a loan for 15 years. What's our collateral on that?
Well, the collateral is, as I understand, it's -- well, he can answer that, but I want you to go -- Okay. Why don't you go ahead and approach the podium there and give us your name and address, and we'll direct some of these questions right at you.
Right. Michael Nguyen. I'm with Atlantic Housing Foundation. I'm the president. Address is 2611 Ross Avenue, Dallas, Texas. And was that it? Was that sufficient?
That's good.
Okay. To answer the question, the collateral, right now, I guess, to address the first comment about 3%, this was something that the state, THCA did, the state agency specified to allow us to get the maximum points. And just to take a step back, we have a project that is very competitive. Right now, for Region 3, which is where encompasses Granbury and the surrounding area, the scoring came back at the end of January. This project is two points out of the lead. So the leader scored 120. We have 118. We have since identified several points that will put us, in effect, in the lead. And this application would, if the city and the council would support it, would garner an additional 14 points for the project. So the rate, I agree with you, is very low, but it was not something that we set. In speaking with Wayne and Scott from the Development Office, we've indicated that, based on our projections of the project, we believe this loan will get paid back in much quicker timeframe than 15 years. If it's the council's desire, we can certainly pay it off much quicker than that.
And the collateral?
Oh, and the collateral. Right now, it's, you know, it'll be evidenced by a loan agreement, and I think it's to be negotiated. But I will just submit that we can certainly guarantee the loan as a corporation to make sure that, you know, it will get paid back. In addition to any other collateral.
Are we able to put a second lien on it?
It depends on the first lien. And I don't want to be coy, just because we don't have the permanent financing structure identified. Right now, we are considering using a FHA 221D4 loan. And FHA HUD is typically extremely difficult to work with in terms of second liens. So it -- not saying it's impossible, it might be --
I know we hadn't resolved it yet, but do you have any assets that you could put up as a lien?
Like I said, I think we'd be happy to pledge. We'd be happy to guarantee the loan.
Do you have any securities you could put up?
Sure. I mean, if that's what's necessary, you bet. We'd be happy to do so.
Would it be a personal guarantee, or would it be a corporate guarantee?
Well, I think corporate guarantee with, you know, cash or securities, that would guarantee this loan, I believe, is --
No, we'd put up $100,000 or $100,000. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. If that's -- if that will make the --
Yeah, the intent here is to get higher points, so you get the tax credits.
Yes, sir.
I don't know that it's a financial issue for you. It's we're trying to get those points to get the --
Yes, sir.
The funds.
That's well put.
Mr. Green, is there a deadline on this? Is it -- is this by the 28th?
Yes, sir. So the application for the full application has to be submitted.
You get the points.
Right. And you get additional points by having this resolution in support, the financial support for the project before you submit, or by the 28th.
Would you also get points by changing the ratios of units for low-income versus market? The other ones we've looked at had a lot fewer apartments in the current market rate and more apartments in the lower rates.
Yes, sir. We actually have capped out. 80 units, that's the maximum the state will allow us to bill in this region for restricted units. We would love to do more. We've been restricted. We've been capped out.
Okay. And it says, let's see, eight -- six units to be restricted families at or below 30% of the area median. What is the area median?
Area median for this, I guess, Ruben is our analyst, who may know the numbers a little bit better than I do. But the area median is, what, 66,000 for a family of four? Is that correct? So 30% of 66, call it 820 -- what is that? My math is really bad. 20 or so thousand, I think it's the 30%.
So 30% of that would be about 20,000 bucks, right? $20,000. So that would be sort of the bottom.
Yes, sir.
Then what would be market rates? What would be your top, what would be the maximum rents allowed?
Market rate is pretty much competitive for whatever the market rate is prevailing in Granbury. I believe it's probably starting for the one-bedroom, starting somewhere, what, around $800?
Yeah.
Right. For a market-rate one-bedroom, and it goes up from there.
And so 16 units would be for families at 50%, which would be 33,000, and then 60%, which would be 36 carried through, about 40,000 bucks, right?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I don't know how to encourage you to maybe include more units at the 60%. I'd be more amenable to the idea, because that puts you in the reins that a lot of our people are making. I mean, we're talking about school -- we're not talking about low-income people. We're talking about schoolteachers and policemen and that kind, right? From 20 to $40,000, that's not particularly low income, but from 33 to 40,000, if you'd give us more units at that, then that gives us a broader appeal rather than 72 at maximum rates.
Right, right. But listen, you know, we had this conversation with THCA, and it's -- this is the first year where they set a cap for what's considered rural. So Region 3 rural, you know, outside of the major metropolitan area.
Well, that seems sort of antithetical to their existence, doesn't it?
Understood. We didn't agree with it, but unfortunately, that's -- those are the rules they've set. And so we're -- for us to garner tax credits for this year's round, we have to abide by their cap. I agree with you. I would love to provide more. But, you know, again, this won't be our only deal in Granbury, so we hope we get an opportunity to come back again.
So in reading the type of property, I said it's wood frame. I'm assuming you'll have to meet our brick requirements and things of that nature?
Yes, sir.
Or do you have special -- do they override local code?
No waivers. No, sir. We plan to abide by all development codes that the city has set.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Couch?
Well, I just want to get a sense. We are in desperate need of affordable housing in Granbury. So I'm just trying to understand the benefit of your project to our city if we're going to provide funds for this. If we don't see rents any less than what's out there now, why would we want to encourage that? And how is that fair to somebody else that's not under this program? There would not be -- we would not be lending them funds.
Right. Well, 80 of the units are restricted. And so, as Councilman Parsons pointed out earlier, 80 of those units will address families making 60, 50, and 30% of area median income. And that is the max that the state will allow us to bill in any one project within Region 3. And so, you know, we currently own a limit over 12 acres at Davis and 377, and, you know, the zoning allows for higher density, more than the 80. And so our idea was to, in order to afford and spread the cost of that land, we would bill additional units, but those additional units would have to be at market rates. Did that answer your question?
Yes. And what I see missing in this is the actual HUD numbers for the median incomes. Is there a reason why that's not in here?
Yeah, it's rarely available. We can certainly provide it.
Because that'd be helpful for us to actually see what kind of incomes we're actually talking about, along with the maximum allowable rents.
Sure.
That fall underneath what you're obligated to provide in that complex.
You bet, you bet.
To achieve your tax credit.
You bet. It's rarely available data published by HUD for this 2014 -- 2014 hasn't come out yet, so it'll be 2013.
Do you actually have it here tonight? We can make some copies so they can see it. Because for them to vote on it, they may not see it.
We'll do a quick search and see if we can pull it up.
I had one other question. When do we fund? Are we funding at the day one, or do we only fund at certificate of occupancy?
Once they get the tax credits.
What does THCA require? That they fund when we close, or they fund after CO? We're flexible.
Since there's no loan agreement, we'll be negotiating to sign until Atlantic Housing is awarded tax credits.
Right.
But we have to have a resolution or something that says we're willing to do it.
Yes.
And that's what helps get you the points.
Right. We're very flexible. I think we could certainly push it back until CO, if that's amenable. But I don't think there's a --
You have to have it by the 28th.
The resolutions are to support.
The resolution, not funding. Funding wouldn't be, like, say, till either closing or certificate of occupancy or something.
Mr. Green, have you got one?
I do. This is the HUD numbers.
Okay.
You can look at it.
Yeah. But to answer your problem. To answer the question, you know, this loan gets paid back to us in three years, okay, just through avalourum revenues being generated. It's going to generate $37,000 a year on top of the payments that are coming back to pay off the loan. So that's the benefit, is that we're only funding $108,000, and it's a $9.5 million investment.
We're putting $100,000 up collateral. We're in good shape there.
Yeah, we're in good shape there, and we're generating, in three years, we've generated enough to repay the loan itself anyhow.
This really doesn't mean anything, I guess, but on page four, you say you've got 33 communities totaling over 7,000 units?
Yes, sir.
You familiar with that?
That's roughly the number. Yes, sir.
And then on page seven, it says 25 properties with 6,000 units. What's the difference?
That we manage. That we manage. That we self-manage, 25 and 6,000 units, versus what we own. I think the first number you quoted is what we own. Right. We don't manage part of the portfolio.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So you're going to be managing these?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Does the government tell you the difference on, like, the HUD payment, what you get for low income versus what you get for -- if you make more money?
No. You're talking about a voucher program?
Yes.
We will accept vouchers, but I'm not sure I understand the question about the difference.
You don't get refunded by the state on top of what the resident pays you. You make your money off of selling the tax credits, right?
Well, we make them -- the tax credit provides the capital to build this project, along with, you know, senior financing and -- yes.
Council, any more questions for Mr. Green? Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Council, you've heard Mr. Green, and you've had an opportunity to talk about this. I'll entertain a motion now to consider and approve the resolution of financial support.
Where's the -- is the --
Pardon?
The resolution. Could we look at that? Is that available for us on the screen to talk about? I'm having trouble finding it in my packet over here. I mean, we talked about two resolutions. One would be approving the potential of the financing mechanism. The original resolution has already been passed.
Right.
I mean, we passed that one.
That was just to consider it, right?
Just wanted to review that again to see. So we're approving their application. So we're just approving the potential of the financing.
Okay. That's right.
I move for approval of the resolution.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Is this the time, Mayor, we'd put the $100,000 in this motion, or would that be on the next school round? Where they put the $100,000 up?
That'd be in the next program. It's in the resolution.
It'd be in the next. Not this motion?
No.
Okay.
So I have a second by Councilman Allen.
It is in the resolution. It's in Section 1. The city grammar here by approves the applicant. The guarantees. Oh, the guarantees. Oh, all the guarantees of the 108. Oh, okay, I will. Yeah, we'll negotiate that, you know, with them, that they'll guarantee our loan.
That'll be brought back for the council.
Yeah. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Parsons and a second by Councilman Allen. Council, is any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That resolution is approved. The next item is to consider a request of Councilperson Couch to discuss current multi-unit water rates and require deposits structured for utility services. I'll wait until my screen comes up here. I'll go ahead with a little background on this item here. On January 7, 2014, council approved an order to amend the Articles 1.50, 13.02, 13.0204. Section 13.02.002 revised regulations for residential utility billing deposits to avoid bad debt. Staff aligned the city's structure to match Weatherford and Amud, Tri-County, and United Corp. by collecting and deposit equivalent to two months of service. Now, in June 2013, council approved the most recent utility rate structure based on the findings of an extensive in-house utility rate study. The in-depth rate analysis was conducted in-house and progressed in complexity and detail over a period of one year. The highlights and reports of the study were presented in four meetings with the Municipal Utility Advisory Board, over a series of four meetings from February to May 2012, and to the city council in a series of several workshops from June 2012 to May 2013. The utility rate study, paired with the utility fund financials for the city, indicated that the city utility rate structure was outdated, not in line with the market, and long overdue. The current water rate structure does not offer a separate multi-unit water rate consistent with other utility companies such as Weatherford, thus follows the commercial rate structure. So with that background, I'm going to call upon Councilman Couch to give us a little more in-depth definition of what you're looking for here.
Well, you know, I've been hearing from most of the apartment owners in town about what's happened to their water rates. And I think that an oversight is we never did an impact analysis when we pass these rates on the multifamily units. And so they're seeing 50, 60, 70%, some 100% increase in their water and sewer rates. I've talked to Ava. She's going to present, I think, in detail what her findings were. But to give you an idea on the volume rate, you know, when you look at apartment communities in general, they are conservative users when you look at them by unit. And given that this new structure basically adds all the usages together, which throws them into the top tier, they're paying automatically 30, 40, 50% higher rate, even though they are a conservative user by unit or by family. I think we're in agreement on the reduction on the tier rate on that. So with that, I'll turn it over to, or I'll let you turn it over to Ava.
Thank you, Councilman Couch. I might note out, too, that pursuant to our City of Granbury Home Rule City Charter, no vote will be taken on any proposals offered until after the proposals have been presented to the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board. And with that said, I will call upon Ava to -- yeah, there she is. I'm sorry. To discuss her findings.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, city manager, city attorney. I have given you all a handout today, just to give you an idea at the different multi-units we have sampled. What you see is 15 different multi-unit apartments in the city that represent about 80% of our, all of our multi-units. It's on the third page of that handout. And in depth, you are able to see the number of units each multi-unit has, the number of meters connected to these multi-units, the type of meters, their average bill, their average consumption, and the percentage of increase, and as well as the monthly average increase since the rate study. I also have calculated an average. The average increase for these 15 different apartments is about 45%. And the main reason to the increase is that we have the rate study, what we have actually reviewed about a year ago today, was increased the minimums on 2-inch meters. Most of these multi-units do have 2-inch meters. The minimum used to be 1640, and our structure, what we have done was we have taken our 1640 minimum have taken our sixteen forty minimum and added the three dollars and five cents per unit. That's how we calculated our minimum. Now, we are following a commercial rate structure, as most cities and utilities do. We have also attached a handout for you to, give you an idea, to review what other cities do, the ones we were able to get hold of. But, the increase is really related to the minimum increase. And our analysis about a year ago had introduced you to the fact that these larger meters and bigger lines take a larger impact, put a larger impact on our system. That is the reason we have wanted to shift some of the impact to the commercial customers, because before, our structure have charged the same to residential and commercial customers. So, our goal was to make sure that, and Mr. Couch, Councilman Couch is right, we did not do an impact study just on multi-units, but we have mirrored the same structure for multi-units as any other commercial company or business would pay for their meters. The impact you see for these fifteen apartments really varies. The larger impact is reflected on the ones who have multiple meters. There are a couple apartments which have eight, five, six, fifteen meters, while others only have one or two meters. And several of them have multiple utility accounts. And it is also true that we are, with our current rate structure, we are unable to capture the minimums for each unit. So, after the two thousand, eight thousand, and the ten thousand tier, most of the consumption goes into the largest tier, the eight dollars tier. I have done a quick calculation and calculated what would happen if we would take the entire consumption and put it into the second tier, which is the six dollars and seventy-five cents tier. What I came up with, just a simple calculation, for every hundred thousand gallon, the saving would be about hundred and twenty-five dollars, if they would put the entire consumption into the second tier.
Per multifamily unit.
Per multifamily unit, yes. So, with that said, if you look at the other structure, because we really wanted to see what everybody else is doing, if they have a different rate structure for multi-units. And besides AMUD, who we reached out to, everybody else followed the same structure what we do, the commercial structure, not taking into consideration the number of units. I understand Mr. Councilman Couch's concern, and we have been analyzing and trying to see what is it, what we could do different. But, the only thing I could maybe propose, what I said, was, we would have to maintain the same minimums, what we charge to every commercial customer for the two-inch meter, but maybe we could entertain the idea of putting the consumption into the second tier.
And to cap it there, not have it go to the hard tier.
Yes.
Ava?
Yes.
Counsel, you got any questions for Ava?
It's pretty clear meters cost money.
Right.
So, what, why would a sixty-unit apartment have fifteen meters? I mean, I'm just, sort of a rhetorical question. Would that be for cost control within their own building, or?
Well, I think those may be quads, are they?
I'm not sure, I did not have time to dive into that, but they do have fifteen separate utility accounts.
And that's what we want to do. We want to go, we're going to have Ava go and just look at, how can we restructure these, you know, to help them, help them under this new, because we did create the rate structure, and the rate structure is based on market. It's very similar to other water duffing.
It must seem a little narrowish, the way it ends up.
And in the past, what, they could put in these two-inch meters and face, you know, not pay for them, and who cared, you know? Well, except the taxpayer. We cared, because they cost a lot of money, and they have a lot of maintenance, and they require a lot of capacity. So, once we said, okay, we're going to charge for them and make them pay, we owe them to try to do the most efficient meter structure that we can come up with them. The problem is, there's some regulations, Ava, you can discuss that, is, there's certain requirements, because if you have a fire or something, and we've allowed them to put in too little of capacity to fight it, we have a problem. And so, I want you to talk about that real quick, if you don't mind.
Going up here, Rip.
Take your time, Alva. We've got all night.
Mr. Dillon.
Yes, sir. Basically, what Wayne's referring to is, on a lot of plumbing codes, you have fixture counts and so forth, and when you, when you're designing the buildings, or when they're getting ready to put them in, that's what that's based off from, is the fixture counts with the plumbing codes, and flows and so forth. Again, like I said, a two-inch meter, you could do about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty gallons per minute. A three-quarter meter, you're looking at about eighteen to twenty-five gallons per minute. Obviously, if you have multi-units, a three-quarter inch meter, obviously, is just not going to work. And then, basically, what they do again, in the plumbing code, is if you, you know, have twenty, thirty different fixtures, what they're saying is, okay, if you have all these running, that three-quarter inch meter, obviously, you're going to be sucking air, basically, is what's going to happen. So, this unit over here, they're trying to take a shower, these people over here are trying to wash dishes, well, they're not going to be able to take a shower. So, that's kind of how that works out. You know, we personally don't go, you know, come out and say, you will have a two-inch, you will have a four-inch. Actually, the engineers will actually come out, and they do a lot of the sizing, you know, all the way from the Walmart buildings, to HEVs, to the Krogers. They're the ones that come out, and like I said, they run the fixture counts, they run how much water is actually going to go into it, and then, basically, what we do is, we go out and set the meters per plant, and that's how that works. And to answer your question on the fifteen meters, I believe that's how it is set up, is they actually have one meter per, like, quads, is how they have that set up. And again, they, the same thing, they go by the fixture counts and so forth. Some are older than others, and that's also a reason why you'll see some that has more meters than others. Some, I have no idea why they have as many as they do sometimes, but that's what they, the engineer designs, and that's what we, obviously, that's what we approve on the plans and so forth. So, that's kind of, just some of it.
Yeah. Well, I just, I think I understand what you're talking about there, but then, looking at the list here, you've got one apartment unit that has, or one place that has seventy-two units, and they have one two-inch meter, and their increase was fifteen percent. Now, then, you have down here sixty units that have fifteen meters, and their price went up a hundred and seventy-eight percent. So, you know, I don't know why you would have fifteen meters in relationship to only one at a seventy-two unit place, and I don't know whether that's because of four bedrooms, nine bedrooms versus one bedroom, or what.
What they do sometimes is, like I said, when, they like to, a lot of times, in building them, they like to know, you know, they want them isolated per building, so actually, when they're billing, they can actually see how much each, you know, quad plate, something like that. And so, a lot of times, it's up to them. They actually say, this is what we want, and are able to do that. And that's why a lot of them are like that. Again, we don't, we don't maintain it, we don't say, you know, you're going to have this, this, and this. Now, obviously, you do want, you know, depending, like, say, if you sell a duplex or something separate, you have to have two separate tabs to it, but far as what they're doing, that's pretty much what it is, and that's how it's dictated. And then, going back to, kind of like, again, the other thing is, kind of what you're just talking about, as far as on the meters, as Wayne pointed out, again, you're looking at a one, or say, a three-quarter inch meter, you're looking at a hundred and fifty-two dollars. So, a payback, and basically, you've got about a twelve-year life expectancy on these things. So, same thing with a two-inch, except for now, a two-inch meter, you're looking at about eight hundred, nine hundred dollars, and they're actually increasing, as we speak, that you have to pay over that same lifespan. So, that's kind of, again, that goes back to some of the minerals.
Did Wayne say we did not use to charge for meters?
Not for a two-inch meter like we're charging now. We used to charge them sixteen dollars. We used to change them, charge them the same thing as a three-quarters meter.
Yes, if it was a four-inch, it was sixteen dollars a month. If it was a two-inch, it was sixteen dollars a month, same thing.
But, the meter itself, Alva, did we charge the customer for that?
No. Not, not. They do now. I mean, we did over the last, I guess, what's it been, about five years, we do what's called meter set fees, and we do now, but back in, a long time ago, we did not.
Back in the day.
Yeah, back in the day, we did not.
Before they got a finance guy in there.
Those good old days.
You know.
But, like, if you, if they already got the meter in.
Yes, sir.
And let's say they had a problem with it, and five years ago, they wouldn't charge for it, but now the meter went out, you'd charge them for the meter?
No, sir, not now, no, no. They're basically, that's in your bill, pretty much, so the minimal is kind of coming out with that.
So, this includes the payment of the bill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I mean, the meter, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the meter.
Yeah, okay, I got it now.
Yes, sir.
Will? Okay. Question is, if we, if we backed that out, backed up that fee, then we could charge them for the meter, and they just had to pay it upfront, instead of being paid out over months, months or years' time, is that correct?
They pay for the meter as well. It's called a meter set fee, and again, depending on size, that's how much you're going to pay. So, like, when you build a house, for example, and you, you know, you cut them in, and, you know, you take out your, you do your application and so forth, and you want a three-quarter inch meter, okay, your meter set fee is a hundred and fifty dollars. So, you're going to pay that upfront.
And a hundred and fifty includes a meter?
Correct.
What if it's a two-inch meter?
It'd be the, how much, nine hundred, I believe it's nine hundred.
Okay.
So, again, you'll pay for it upfront, and then, like I said, basically, in twelve years or so, when the life expectancy, you know, goes down, or goes out, then we turn around and put another one in, but you're not charged again for that same amount, at least not upfront.
Counsel, any more discussion or questions for Alva or Ava?
Well, I, I.
Councilman Couch?
You know, on these calculations, I want to, I guess, give the council a better sense of what this has done to these apartment communities, because a lot of them will do a, an allocation to where the resident is paying the water bill, and so, they're seeing their water bill go up twice as much. But, under this, under this, your own, these numbers here, forty-one percent of the units are seeing an eighty percent increase in their bill. Sixty percent or more, sixty percent of the units are seeing at least a fifty percent increase in their bill. So, I'm just hoping that Alva can work with some of these owners on their configuration, because, you know, whether, you know, this property that has fifteen meters, well, they don't have fifteen meters because they have this incredible demand, they have fifteen meters because, you know, some engineer, or it was probably more out of convenience to the property than it was about demand. So, it's just my hope that that can be worked through. If not, I think we would have to come back and look at a base rate per unit. So, I guess we'll continue to work on that, because that.
You prefer to have Alva and the rest, and city staff, look at that, or would you prefer that we go ahead and remand it to the MUAB board?
Because, yeah, what we could do tonight, Counsel, we can, we can make a motion to submit some changes to the MUAB board for consideration.
I think we need to talk.
And that being, Alva, Ava, Wayne, and different folks, put it together and submit that to them, and we can make a motion to do that tonight.
Well, maybe that's one of the same, but I think we have, we have to get a sense, just like on the property that I'm, that I own, you know, I've got all sorts of meters on there that, but from a volume point of view, it's not required. Is it possible to downgrade those meters?
We just have to look at.
Right.
I just have to look at them a little bit, see.
Once we look at that further, then.
And then, I would see you make a recommendation on that. Yes, sir.
Well, interesting question would be, like, we've got a number of them here that have one meter, and they're, you know, they're pretty large units, seventeen percent increase, twenty-one percent increase, twenty percent increase. How does that compare with me or other homes in the, in the city? Is that, is that out of line with what other homes experienced around, or is that fairly close to what everyone experienced?
More, very close to what commercial customers experienced with water meters, not residential.
With what commercial experience?
Right. Because the multi-unit is treated as a commercial unit, and it reflects, mirrors the commercial rate.
And we actually, you know, moved a lot of the cost to the commercials opposed to the residential.
Yeah.
That came out of MUAB, they're wanting to keep the residential rates more constant.
I don't want us to go picking out certain businesses in town or apartments and say, we're going to work a deal with them. We do it for one, we better do it for all.
Well, I think when we look at this, we'll be able to look at it and see if we can do it for the ones that doesn't cost a lot of money, number one, and then, we can look at them and adjust them and stuff. And that's, and that's what we want to do, is probably look at this later on and then submit that to MUAB. So, you know, tonight, we'll probably just leave this as a discussion, if there's, if there's no changes that we want to submit right now, but then, get the, get Alva and Ava and Wayne maybe to look at some changes that we possibly do.
We need a motion on that, Mayor?
No, we really don't need one, if it's just, leave it at discussion.
I think what we wanted to talk about with deposits, too, did you?
Sure, I do have a handout on the deposit.
It's the first page on your handout.
Okay.
We have recently, just a month ago, had made, amended our deposit structure. Previously, we have only charged a hundred dollars per service, or a hundred and fifty dollars for all three services. And after, we have gone and reviewed other utility companies and other cities, and also reviewed our bad debt, we have came to a conclusion that our deposit structure did not sufficiently cover the minimum that we needed for the utility accounts. As you know, by the time we are able to bill for each account, it's the following month, and by the time the customers skip start on us, we already have collected two months' worth of utility bills. That is the reason, in order to reduce bad debt, as we have started the discussion, we have proposed to charge two months' worth of, sixty days' worth of utility services. This sheet, what you have in front of you, gives you an idea of what other cities or other utility companies do. There are, we are very in line with everyone else. We also wanted to tell you that we do accept letter of credit, so if a customer can submit us a letter of credit, we will not charge a deposit, if they do have a clean record and there is no late payment penalty or late payment notice on their letter of credit. Our deposit minimum is a hundred and fifty dollars, and our goal is to cover two months' worth of services. We are in line with United Cooperatives, they are doing the same thing, they, they collect two months based on a twelve-month average. When somebody opens an account, they don't take a letter of credit, but they do run a credit check. We don't run credit check at this point, what we do. In line with the credit check, we substitute that with the letter of credit, that's what we offer.
Mayor, I do have a question on that.
Councilman Allen.
I know you've got calls on it, and so did I, and I think y'all worked it out. Would, there was an apartment house, a lady, a business lady in town owns?
Rental house.
Rital?
I think so.
Rital. And she was saying it was like four, five hundred dollars deposit y'all were asking for, on an apartment. And she said, these people just can't afford to pay five hundred dollar deposit, and then pay their deposit down to her for the rent, you know? What are we doing on cases like that?
Well, we offer to spread the deposit out for, during a two-month period, so we would not ask the deposit right upfront. But, again, if they are able to give us a letter of credit and show us their credit has been cleaned with previous utility providers, we will not even ask for a deposit.
Where would it get the letter of credit from, Alva?
It would come from their previous utility provider, so whoever they were with before.
Okay.
And then, we would not require a deposit. And the five hundred dollars, again, is calculated, probably all three utility services are offered, water, electric, and sewer. And we just go back for the last twelve months, we are able to see the history for that account, and we calculate the average. And again, we are protecting ourselves in case the customer is unable to pay their utility bill.
And if we checked this owner of the rental property, you'd find that they were getting a deposit for first and last month, two months' deposit. They're not taking the risk, but they would like for us to take the risk, the taxpayers. So. So, you know, we're just doing what is financially proper, and, you know, we've offered to this particular rental person, if she wants to put up the two months, they will be happy to accept that in her name, but she wouldn't take the risk either, because-
Offered that to her, and she says she didn't want any utility business. Neither do we.
But the letter, letter of credits are just from previous landlords, it's not from a bank?
Previous utilities.
Utility providers.
Previous, okay.
Of course, they moved here from Dallas, they can get a copy, or a letter from them saying they paid their bills.
Yeah.
There's no deposit?
Excuse me?
No deposit, yeah, it's over the last 12 months.
Yeah, if they have no late payment notice on the letter of credit.
Fair.
Over the last 12 months.
Last 12 months.
Well, one thing I thought we might consider in that, in that situation, is that instead of saying you had to have 12 perfect months, that if they were late once, that maybe we would be willing to accept that. Because I really encourage you, staff, that when you make these changes, okay, that, that we do it incrementally, I mean, you're going, you're asking from a hundred, or $150 deposit, all of a sudden, bam, you want $500. Because I know you, you have, in the past, when it comes to the city's finances, you always want to be very conservative and not anticipate higher revenues than what we, that are, that are conservative, to not throw off the budget. Well, we need to have the same compassion for these property owners as well, that we don't, we don't implement these changes so dramatically that overnight, they're faced with something that devastates their businesses. And I think that we could, you know, do that over a course of a year, so they know what's coming, they can prepare for it a little bit. So when you, when you look, and the other part to this is, you know, we talk about Weatherford, and we talk about Stevieville, they don't have electric rates, they don't have water and sewer rates that we, that we have here. And so those, those deposits are much less just because of the, of their cost of, of their utilities. So the impact is huge. You're, you're asking for a $500 deposit, then you turn around and you, and you double the actual bill to the, to the, to that apartment community? So it's been pretty devastating this last six months of this, this new, these new rates, and it's all due because we never did an impact analysis.
Well, if I may add to that, I only heard from one apartment complex owner that had that problem, and that also relates to the type of building, structure that does not have insulation that caused the high utility rates. We have not been notified that there are-
I'm of full agreement that we need this. I would just like us to be a little more compassionate in the way we go about it.
Well, we were not requiring multifamily, each resident to put up deposits, we were just, the multifamily, right? Was each, which, each, each resident wasn't having to put up a deposit, because it's not in his name, the count's not in their name.
If it's in their name, then-
No, in a multifamily, it's not in their name.
I'm not too concerned with that, how that exactly works.
Water and electricity, both. Well, electricity may be.
Yeah, electricity is in a individual name, water is not. Yes, exactly, yeah.
Is that true? This is the, we'd step over to the mic. Yes.
My name is Cindy Klein, I'm the utility billing manager here. The way the rates are set up and the way the deposit is set up is based on application. You come in and you apply, and we ask you at that time if you have a letter of credit. If you have a letter of credit, then we don't ask for a deposit. Depending on what services you want with the city is how it varies with what your deposit is. Somebody that has all four services would be very high, and I think, somebody mentioned, I'm not sure, about the water rates, but we also studied some electric rates as well, and I think that should be on the sheet, like TXU and Reliant and Tri County, all the electric companies are also trying to get to the 60 days of service, because they bill the same way we do. By the time we bill somebody and figure out that they've skipped, or that they're not going to pay, we have two months' bad debt. So that's how the structure was set up. To make it easier, we decided to split those deposits up so that they wouldn't be as difficult as some. There are some deposits that are high, but a lot of those are three-bedroom places inside of apartment buildings, and they're getting all four services, so that's why they're that high. That's kind of not the norm. Most peoples aren't that high. Anybody with electric is going to be higher.
Thank you, Chris. Council, any questions, any more questions for either one of these ladies? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, Council, if there's no more discussion, we'll, we will consider this one a discussion item and no action taken.
Let me say, we will look at letting them have one late payment. I heard that request, I'm okay with that, okay?
We'll look at it.
At this time, I'll now declare that the City Council is in open session, and that all members except Councilperson Myers are present. We will now retire into executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code of Consultation with the Attorney. Shall return. We returned from executive session, there was no action taken at this time. Council, if there's no more discussion items, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
These are the two resolutions that were, yes.